Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the school community meeting on this Tuesday, November 10th, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order and note that a small group of us are in studio social distancing, but this is a virtual meeting which is being broadcast live on WCAT's Facebook page. I'd like to start the meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and for all. Thank you. Next is the reading of our mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college career and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Next on the agenda is the public comments section. If anyone from the public would like to participate in our meeting, I would ask that you identify yourself with your name and address. Okay, I'm seeing and hearing no one, so I will move on if that's okay? All right, thank you. Consent agenda, Suzie.
Move that the school committee approve the minutes of September 25th, 2020 special school committee meeting and accept the minutes of the October 1st, 2020, October 8th, 2020, and October 15th, 2020 school committee financing facilities subcommittee meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Veer?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
And Mr. Lee Akos.
I abstain. I think those were meetings I didn't attend.
Were they? Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda are budget items. Christine.
Great. So tonight you have the financial report in front of you. It's from July 1st through October 31st of this year. As you can see from the first page for the local budget, we're pretty close to where we were at this time last year due to in fact that we're doing increased COVID purchases, but we're also been in school almost every day, the staff in the building, hence the increase in utilities and purchases for contracted services for updates to the buildings. You can see those two lines that are negative are for special ed tuition and contracted services due to increased purchasing, and we're hoping to have the fee more reimbursement that we've been working on with the town within the next couple of months. And the second page is by school, and then as you can see, we've also in October got our entitlement grants, which we're thankful that they were level funded by the state, Title II-A, the SED, Title I. So those came in just as we were hoping that they would for the budget. We've moved 32 paraeducators onto the SED grant, which definitely helped the local budget. The last page is the revolving accounts. We're just, we're not collecting tuition, I mean transportation fees this year, so we're going to have to look at that moving forward. And the other negative is we're collecting for preschool tuition. But tuition payments are coming in from our families. Does anyone have any questions at this time? Suzie?
Christine, I just, I did have a question about that, the preschool tuition number, because it's a pretty big number that we're in the red. Is, are we, you said that the payments are starting to come in. Is that a number that it accounts for kind of a student's full year cost?
So.
But people make the payments monthly?
So what it is, it's negative because we know the teacher's tuition, the teacher's salaries for the year, so we've encumbered them for the year. So that encumbrance column has a 422, 238. Those are all the salaries to run the program for the full year. So it's encumbered for the year, so we know the revenue that has to be received to make up that money. So yeah, so it's billed monthly, so you'll see it come in. I just thought it was important to encumber for the year, so we know the target that we have to meet.
Got it. So that was going to ask you that Christine. This isn't something we normally do.
I don't think we've encumbered all the salaries last year or the year before, but I just, I just thought because of this year with our enrollment, it's pretty steady, but we just have to keep an eye on it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Christine? Okay, thank you Christine.
And I think we have a payroll report. There was three payrolls in the month of October, and I just think we just have a motion to accept.
We do. Move that the school committee approve payroll warrants 14, 16, and 18 as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Veer?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Guida? Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
And Mr. Lee Akos?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on with the agenda under Chair Comments, I just had a couple of things. I've been in contact with Dorothy Presser. We're trying to schedule a school committee Zoom workshop. You know, we normally do a retreat every year, usually in December, and obviously with COVID, we won't really be able to get together to do that. So we figured the next best thing would be like a PD workshop, and she actually does have availability on Saturday, December 12th. So I think we're going to try and block off three hours, and if you guys could check your schedules and just let me know if you have any conflicts, I would like to get back to her as soon as possible and get that booked. That'd be great. Thank you. And the last thing I have is I received an email from Town Councilor Jonathan Chines. They are working to develop a vision and value statement for Wakefield, and in doing so, they are looking for volunteers from each board and/or committees in town. I did send you an email late this afternoon with more details that I received from Jonathan, but if anybody is ready to volunteer for that now, that would be great. If not, and you want to look at the information I provided, please let me know if anyone would like to volunteer, so I can forward that information to Jonathan.
Amy, can I ask a question of Jonathan now or?
Yeah, I mean, I can try and answer it.
Sure, oh yeah, because Jonathan's on as well. I wasn't sure.
Actually Jonathan's here. Can he not answer it, Amy?
Oh no, he's here, yeah, sure.
Okay.
Okay.
So Jonathan, my question really was more the time commitment involved. What are the expectations of meeting? Can't hear you Jonathan for some reason. Even though you're not on mute, we can't hear you.
Speaker might be off.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great, sorry about that. Yeah, so thanks for just letting me answer that, and Amy, thanks for bringing this as well. I don't think it'll be a huge time commitment, so what we're putting together is sort of a steering committee with representatives from different groups in town, just to help guide some of the work. A lot of the actual work will happen more in public forums that, you know, residents will be participating in. So, you know, for this commitment, I think it's probably about three or four meetings over the course of three or four months. It shouldn't be any more than that. We do have a professional facilitator from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council that's helping to organize the work, so a lot of the logistics of getting this together won't fall on this committee. This is really more to help guide some of the idea generation that comes out of some of the public forums.
I wouldn't mind doing it Jonathan unless somebody else would like to do it.
That'd be great, Mike, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate it, and thank you, Amy.
Thank you Jonathan for providing us some additional information. That is all I have under Chair Comments, so I can pass it off to Superintendent Lyons.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you very much everyone for joining us this evening. Just some quick comments and updates. First, we'd like to thank everyone that attended town meeting this past Saturday. We had, we were very interested in Article III, which is where the town appropriated $2 million as part of the MSA, excuse me, the MSBA process for a feasibility study and schematic designs for a new high school. So we're really pleased that that was voted 200 in favor of, one vote against, and I think, I don't know that the vote was against, I think it was more about the language in the warrant, or the language that was presented, but we're really pleased to report that, and we want to thank everyone that was able to attend and be part of that vote. And we're, it's a milestone that is kind of the next step for us as we're completing the first step of the grant process, and now we're moving into step two of the grant process, which is feasibility and schematics. So there'll be more information forthcoming in December on what our next steps will be. I'd also like to let everyone know that the first quarter will be ending at the high school on November 20th. The middle school trimester will be ending on December 14th, and so we are also kind of wanted to report that marching band ended this past week, and we will be starting a cappella and the fall drama production, which is going to be a Christmas carol, which is going to be presented via Zoom. And so we want to thank everyone involved in extracurricular activities, especially Tom Bankard and all of the people that are working with him. I think that they've been remarkably creative, and our students have been remarkably resilient in just working to make it work safely and to pull it all off, so thank you very much for that. Also, just an update for athletics, so we'll be closing out kind of our fall season, and we are meeting as a group of superintendents and athletic directors. We'll be meeting on Thursday to discuss any guidance that's being provided by MIAA and the possibility of figuring out what sports we might be able to offer for the winter season. So that's a piece. We also need to thank, give a special shout out and thanks to our food service personnel and who have been amazing. Our numbers continue to go up in regard to the number of families that we are supporting in the community through our food service program. I think we're up to about 400 families, which is, I think, a testament to the hard work and leadership of Danielle Collins and her group. I think that's really something that's, that we're doing, that's really a service that we should be proud of. And so I also want to thank our nurses who have been amazing. So I don't know if you know, but our school nurses work very closely with the local, our Wakefield Board of Health, with both the administrator and Karen Cronin, the nurse, with Ruth Clay, who's the administrator, and Karen Cronin, the lead nurse there. And so we support them in helping out with contact tracing around COVID, and so, but our school nurses have worked and gone above and beyond. I think I talked to Mary Doherty, who is our lead, I think I talked to her probably two or three evenings a week, and almost every weekend we've had a conversation about, you know, a quarantine, or an exposure, or something that we have needed to do to adjust. And so that's what I have for news and information, just updates and comments. And so just one last piece in regard to our elementary administrators and teachers are going to be working in data teams, looking at how students are progressing as well in the coming month. So there'll be more information forthcoming there. And so I can move on to kind of a COVID-19 update and kind of data look. And so just in terms of how many positive cases in Wakefield, as of last Friday, we now have a standing meeting with Steve Mayo and Ruth Clay that's recorded at WCAT, where we review the weekly data for the number of cases, positive cases that we've had for students in the school, and Ruth gives a perspective of how the community is faring and what the transmission of the virus has looked like. As of last Friday, we had 10 students that had tested positive for COVID. That's six at the elementary level, three at the middle, and one, excuse me, six at the high school level. Thanks Suzie, see you shaking your head. And so six at the high school level, three at middle, and one at elementary. And so, and at the start of this week, there are three new cases where we have one middle, one elementary, and we learned today that there was another student that tested positive at the elementary level. And we've sent out letters indicating what schools and provided information there. And I'll cover a little bit more of that when I talk about my slides. But in regard to the transmission of the virus and our ability to keep students safe, we continue to see very positive results from the safety precautions that are being kind of put forth in the schools. Social distancing and students wearing masks, it's really working, right? And so if it weren't working well, we would see a much greater correlation between the COVID-positive students and also the transmission of the virus into our schools. And it's not perfect, and the numbers are kind of going up around the state, but we do want to report that, you know, so far, things are looking very positive. And of the 10 cases that we had last Friday, seven of those students are no longer active and have returned to school. And as of last Friday, we had three students that are active cases, so those three that made up the 10 and the three new cases, so it looks like we have six active students that we're working with right now. And so that's a, that's a quick data snapshot of where we are with COVID right now in the district. I don't know if people have questions. Suzie?
Last meeting, we made a distinction between the kids that you're sending emails out about, and then other kids who test positive but had not been in school in the previous 48 hours to the positive testing, or having the test taken, I believe is the distinction.
Yeah.
So if we're at 10 students plus the three that came out in the last two days, are there any other kids that fall into kind of that other category, or are we at 13 total?
We are at 13 total. And so we've sent, I believe today is the fifth letter that we've sent to the community, and the letter, the fifth letter that we sent today indicates when we're, that letter is to notify parents that there's been a COVID-positive student in school that has required us to do contact tracing. We have not sent letters, but yet report on Friday the total cases, and we're also reporting the total cases in the letters that we're sharing. But in regard to getting correspondence out via letter and email, it's sent through Messenger. Those are for COVID-positive students that are in school where we're doing contact tracing. So that's the distinction. Is that clear, Suzie?
Yep.
Okay.
I just wanted, I wanted to check to see if there were additional cases that were kind of the other grouping, but you confirmed it's 13 in total, and I think those 13 students and one staff member?
So yes, the one staff member that was reported last Friday, thank you for bringing that up, I didn't mention that. The one staff member is, is a staff member that works for the Wakefield Public Schools, but does not come into our school buildings.
Okay. And then can you give a sense of, like, do you have a count of how many kids are currently quarantined, or do you not have kind of that number?
Our nurses are compiling that number, and we'll have an update of what that number is on Thursday.
Okay.
So we'll have an update from there.
Thank you Doug.
Sure. I believe Michael had a question. Mike?
Yeah Doug, a question of you and for the larger group as well. A parent had asked me to ask this question. Do we, what are your thoughts around whether we kind of preemptively set up some sort of consequences if kids are involved in a gathering that doesn't meet the state mandates, whether they host it or they attend it? You know, I know, I don't believe any of these cases thus far have been the result of anything of that sort, but just curious your thoughts whether we want to set something up ahead of time to make sure that kids think twice about it before they host a larger gathering?
Yeah, you know, we've talked about this within our superintendent group, and I will tell you, I don't, I think that there's some issue about assigning consequences for behaviors outside of school functions, outside of our schools, right? And so decisions that students are making, or that families are making, I think that our purview kind of ends if it's not a school sanctioned event. And so, you know, I know some, some school committees and some superintendents have, you know, done a little bit of, offered up a little fire and brimstone around that, and I think, you know, I understand where that comes from, you know, but I will tell you that I think the best way to go is to communicate well, to kind of create high expectations, and to trust people, right? You know, so that's kind of, I think, the direction that we're heading right now. And so we believe that we need to control the controllables. So it's, it sounds good, Mike, but I don't think legally would have a leg to stand on. So if we don't have a leg to stand on, why try to pick a fight that you're not going to win, number one? And number two, I think that the majority of people are really doing a great job. So, so that's, that's my feedback there.
Okay. Any thoughts of anybody else? Like, thank you Doug, well spoken.
Thanks, Mike, I appreciate the question.
Yeah. Greg has a question.
Yes, thanks, thanks Amy. Doug, if you're going to get into this with your slides, you know, feel free to, you know, push it out, but my question had to do with, I was thinking about your meetings with the Director of the Board of Health and the Town Administrator. When you're looking at the data and looking at metrics like positivity rates and infection rates, are you able to compare the school data, the student data, and to a lesser extent the staff rates with the overall rates of the town? And do those affirm your belief that the schools are a better and safer environment than, than a lot of the other places where the virus is spreading more rapidly?
So the short answer is yes, when you look at the number of positive cases that we've had since September until now. You know, right now, we, it looks like we're going to have, we have five or six active cases out of, you know, we have 3,500 students. And when you look at our range of students and, you know, our students that are participating in athletics, participating in extracurricular activities, you know, they're out with their families, they're, you know, there's, there's a lot of students and a lot of faculty members. You know, we employ 500, right now, we employ 555 people. Last year, we're at 567, so we're down a little bit. But, you know, I think that the rates are much higher out in the general community than they are in our schools.
Right.
I think that that bears out in regard to MassDPH data, Board of Health data, and also state data, right?
Right, thank you, yeah. And I guess the reason I raise that, it's probably obvious, but, you know, many of us are concerned about the rising infection rate, of course, not just in Wakefield, but across the state and across the country. But at some point, you know, we're going to be looking at, you know, the next phase of the reopening of schools, and I think, I just think it's important to make a distinction between what's happening in the broader community and what's happening within and around the schools, and to be able to really, you know, analyze that data and be clear about the differences between those two environments. So thank you.
You're certainly welcome. Other questions? No? Go ahead.
No, I was gonna, I said no.
So I can just move on. I'd like to just discuss just some slides that we put together just to do a quick update on some data and some scenarios that we are actively discussing with administrators, with teacher leaders, and certainly with our union leadership. And so, you know, first and foremost, you know, every week that we are in session, we are, it's a milestone for us, it's an accomplishment, and I think you've heard me say this, and I'm going to say it again, because I feel like I can't communicate this enough, or we can't communicate this enough. This is a testament to the hard work that's taking place with our faculty, staff, our nurses, they've been amazing. Our Board of Health and our ability to collaborate with town leaders, you know, we are in school, this is our seventh week in school, you know, and, you know, Greg brought up something that's really important, which is as we get ready for the next phase, I know that the governor spoke last week about if students are in a certain metric based on the new kind of resetting of the MassDPH map and their color coding, where he said, you know, districts, if they are in gray, which is a non-color, if they're in green, yellow, or yellow, they should be, he suggested that they should be fully in school. And, and so I think that what has not been fully communicated there is in school if it is feasible, right? If it is safe. That's a critical, critical part of this communication, right? And politically, if you kind of do a little research and look at his communication, why that communication was presented the way it was, and also why it's being supported by the Commissioner of Education, at the Department of Education, there's about 970,000 students in the Commonwealth, and about half of those students are participating in full remote plans, right? And they're, and those students largely are kind of focused in urban centers, for example, Boston, which has 55,000 students and 125 schools, they're not getting, they're not able to get students back into school. And so, you know, I think that, I think politicians, you know, civic leaders, city leaders, parents are looking at kind of the toll that it's taking in large urban districts with their kids being out of school, and they're actually desperately working with teachers' unions and with the school leaders to try to get their kids back in. And so I take his comments. And so I I I take his comments to heart. But I'll be honest with you, I don't know that that they were directed at Wakefield. Because in the context of the work that we're doing, I think that we're really in an exceptional space. And and so, and and I know we're focused every day, and I'm looking at Kara, because we we work every single day and we talk every single day about things that we need to be better at, things that we need to improve. But we also need to kind of maintain a context of the the positive space that we're in when we look at a lot of our counterparts in the Middlesex League, and when we also look at other districts across the country. So this first slide is just a reminder that we're in Week Seven of our hybrid and remote plans. Safety continues to be a fundamental part of everything that we do. We would not be able to do this without the extraordinary efforts of our faculty, staff, nurses, and administrators. You know, something that I want to kind of keep at the fore is our goal is to continue to focus on relationships, student engagement, student well-being, and academic progress in that order. Right? And so we will also continue to focus on equity and support for all students during this difficult time. So this slide that you see is a, this is a snapshot from the Wakefield COVID-19 data dashboard. So this dashboard was created by the Wakefield Director of Communications, Jen McDonald, and Ruth Clay, along with Steve Mayo. And so they were gracious in kind of helping us communicate our data. So they've dedicated space on this page. And when you kind of Google, if you're interested in looking at this data, if you just Google Wakefield COVID data, you will get to this dashboard. But you will see, as of last Friday, total number of cases are ten. We have one staff member that Susie asked about a moment ago. And this is kind of a snapshot about where we are. We have a standing meeting on Fridays where we will update and review this data. And I will be part of that meeting. We will do that with Ruth Clay and Steve Mayo, along with, along with Jen McDonald. So this is another part of the information that is shared. At the bottom of the page, it shares positivity rates in Wakefield compared to nearby communities. It also gives an update about our positivity rates over the last two weeks. And this 1.58 is the new number that has been adjusted by population on the new metrics. Right? So we're we're pleased to be able to share this information. Additionally, we want everyone to know that we are actively discussing scaling back versus going full remote, right? And so you'll hear this passed around, like, are we going remote? And and so we, if if that is a parallel or a kind of a distinction to what happened last March, where we closed down and went full remote, you know, ninety-plus percent sure that we will scale back quite a bit before we we kind of go to that level where we're going fully remote. Right? And so, you know, we're in contact with the Wakefield Board of Health and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to assess kind of where we are, where we fare in regard to the transmission of the virus in in Wakefield. And we will make decisions and recommendations to Board of Health. They will make recommendations to us, and we will also communicate that to school committee before we make any changes in schedules. Right? But that could happen if if needed, right? That could happen if we needed, if there were a cluster outbreak or a community outbreak where we could not contact trace. Right? So I don't want to, I want to be clear in my communication. We look at the DPH data, and those are important metrics. We're not saying that they aren't for a second. Right? But what is most critical is our ability to do contact tracing in school and to understand how a virus or the virus is being transmitted. So if there is an outbreak where we had three or four cases where we couldn't contact trace and we didn't understand the origins of the transmission, we likely would shut down wherever those students, that that number of students might be located in our school system. So if it's at high school, it it would be high school. If it were, you know, a particular team, we might shut down a team. If it were at elementary, we might shut down a class or a cohort. You know, we have a cohort A in the morning that comes for the morning session and cohort B in the afternoon. If we needed to shut down a cohort, we would do that as well. And so it's really important for us to communicate and let the community know that we have experience teaching remotely. Right? Our teachers have quite a bit of experience teaching remotely. And, you know, Phase Two, we started in a remote plan to have that experience. Right? And to be able to kind of develop our skills in that area. Right? And so if we if we need to revert back to what was our Phase Two, we can do that. We can do that by school, we can do that by level. There's, there's a number of different iterations of that. Right? So we've, we've talked about if we needed to make a change at the high school, for example, we could do that, where, but we could also keep middle school, elementary, and preschool in our current Phase Three hybrid and remote models. Right? But make a change at one level. So we're also looking at all levels and possible scenarios that may warrant individual schedule changes. Right? And this includes modifying schedules. And I think I shared a little bit about that, right? So that's an important piece. But I just want to make the distinction between full remote and scaling back, because most likely, we will be doing some scaling back if needed, if the transmission gets into our schools and we can't contact trace. Other things that we're discussing is refining schedules. When I say refining schedules, we're in Week Seven of our hybrid schedules. We're seeing things that are really starting to work well, but we're also seeing areas that might might need to be improved or might be areas or opportunities of growth for us to just improve what we're doing. So those are things that are actively being discussed. We are assessing our remote and hybrid schedules to think about ways to increase student contact time. That's something that's happening at all levels. We are also looking at ways to better support intervention services at the elementary level that focus on counseling. Right? Social emotional supports that focus on counseling and literacy as a starting point. And again, this is just a starting point. I don't know if I'm I'm missing anything, Kara, anything that you think is important to include that maybe I haven't brought up?
No, I think I think you've hit on everything. These are all part of the conversations each week at every level. We are continuing our reopening meetings with mostly administration at every level and just talking about these things, what what does it mean to scale back? And then what does it mean to improve as we get into more of a routine at each level? And we start to understand what works and what doesn't, how can we continuously evolve? What we started out creating in the summer before we really, you know, we worked with the information that we had at that point. But I think each week we learn more.
Yep. So that's it from us, just just a very quick update. We just wanted to to get some information out there about this idea of full remote, information about what the governor was sharing and what that means for us, as well as things that we're thinking about in terms of how we hope to refine schedules and and things that, the things that will kind of intersect with that as we move forward. I don't know if anyone has any questions? No? Greg?
Yeah, thanks, Doug. And and again, forgive me if I'm coming in late on on some of these questions, you know, because my second meeting back here. But, you know, the phrase student contact time is obviously, you know, one of the, one of the key things that you're monitoring. Do you, I was thinking about this, there was a story in The Globe about, this week, about Mass Business Alliance for Education report that talked about the different ways in which Massachusetts Public School Systems are measuring things like student contact time. And it it caused me to wonder if you and your team have set up ways to measure that that are both uniform, you know, and appropriate ways, whether, you know, by subject matter or by grade level, but also flexible enough to understand the different circumstances in the which teachers and students are working together. In other words, how are we ensuring that student contact time is 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 maximum where it should be?
So Greg, I can speak to that piece. This is something that we've talked about recently, just making sure that we're allocating the appropriate amount of time, you know, just cross referencing it. That really drove the schedules early on, just the the number of minutes per day, three hundred minutes at the elementary. And three thirty, am I getting that correct with the secondary? So that can account for both the the live synchronous lessons as well as asynchronous time, specialist time. So we've really looked at at how that presents at each level. And we've, we're, we've recently submitted to Desi around that data to make sure that each of our schedules has the appropriate amount of instructional time and how that plays out at each level. So we have been been drilling down on that and just making sure that we're on top of that and what that looks like for each level and each student. We talked about, I think we talked about time on learning a lot at the elementary level when we were justifying the asynchronous time and the and the minutes allocated to the asynchronous board that we'd been putting out to families as as a guide for when students aren't in front of their teachers in the live cohort. We also are justifying, you know, some students stay for additional services after their live cohort for either special education or ESL support. So that that's also time on learning for for those students. So it can look different for different students, but we we do have our eye on on meeting those requirements. And I think we we've done so, it's just a matter of how it looks at each level and for each student. If that, if that answers your question.
It does, yeah, and I recognize it's a very complicated question. But, yeah, and and one that I think we have, all have a responsibility to keeping an eye on throughout the school year. So thank you, Kara.
Yeah. So I I'll also say, Greg, I saw the, I saw the article. And the Mass Business Alliance for Education, I think, has been, you know, a a kind of a good check and balance for what's happening at the state level. You know, I I think the the space that I think the Department of Education finds itself in is, you know, they've given approval to school committees across the state to make local decisions. Right? And there are three hundred and fifty-one communities that have all made local decisions. You know, and and now what they're trying to do is they're trying to kind of get back, get get back to us and say like, well, you know, we're not sure if we like all of your decisions. You know, and so that's something that they're wrestling with, that I think falls in line with Governor Baker's comments about, you know, it's his opinion that all districts should be open. You know, I I think that that's guidance that politically should have been provided to us back in August. Right? And I think, and if they had provided a little bit more rigid guidance around what the expectations are, I think that there would be more continuity and and less kind of differences that are happening across the state. But in regard to Wakefield, you know, when we look at the minutes that we are required to have and the minutes that we're, we have within our schedules, you know, there are some areas that we need to be better at and and just accounting for and making sure that all students are participating and attending in the way that we need them to. So there's, there's room for improvement. But in our initial design, we designed our schedules and our reopening plans with these targets in mind. So because of that, like Kara says, I think we're in a pretty good place. You know, I I don't want to overstate it, you know, there's always room for growth. You know, and I think that there's little wrinkles at every level that we need to be better at. But we'll be communicating that in our coming meetings.
I think, just to add one more piece, just hand in hand with that, is the the outreach and the attendance and the communication with families that I think we're trying equally to keep an eye on as well, for those students who might not be participating, you know, the way we would expect them to or want them to. We also identified the asynchronous time is is something that we're looking to continue to structure for families and for students to make sure we have full participation and that that time is being used effectively as as time on learning. So I think particularly for the times when students are not live in front of their teachers, we really need to to stay on that outreach and supporting that that structure.
And and I just have a quick question for refining the schedules. Are you, do you have like sort of a working group with teachers? Are you, are you trying to get information from them in terms of how they feel like the last seven weeks have been going? And using that information to possibly make changes or improve the schedules?
So we know that that principals are having these conversations. We're having a a meeting on Monday afternoon outside of our Tuesday standing meeting with WEA, with the union. And so we're going to, and they're going to provide us with some feedback in areas that they feel like schedules might be able to be refined or improved. And so we welcome that feedback. And we also kind of hope to reciprocate and let them know kind of areas that we would like to improve as well.
So the principals are receiving information from their teachers and then reporting them to you?
Well, we have standing meetings with principals every Wednesday. Right? So we we've, we've talked with principals about this, I know at different levels, they've looked at and principals are thinking as groups, right? Like, elementary principals meet together, the admin team and the curriculum coordinators meet at middle at during our reopening meetings, just to us kind of assess where they at. And same thing at the high school. And everyone's in a little different space because they feel like their schedules need to adjust in in a, in different ways. But in regard to teacher leaders and principals having these conversations, that's actively happening. But what we need to do as district administrators, we need to kind of bring this back to our union leaders to just be very transparent and candid about, you know, and invite them into the conversation. Right? And so this is something that we agreed upon when we created our MOU for these working conditions. You know, they had asked very specifically, could we revisit schedules and improve them if we had ways to do that? And our answer was, of course. And and we expect to be able to do the same thing from our perspective.
There were also surveys issued at each level recently, I think, I want to say about two weeks ago. It was before the November third Professional Development Day, where at the elementary level, surveys were issued to parents and then to students at Galvin and the high school, just to get feedback on the hybrid schedules and and learn a little bit more about how they're going, how they could be improved. And then time was given to teacher groups at at Galvin and the middle school during the day to be able to go through the survey data. So I think that probably produced some good conversation and reflection.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
So question, just to Amy's point, I guess. So in order for us to get feedback from the teachers, we're going to the union heads first to get their okay? And then we're getting feedback on some of these schedule changes? Am I hearing that correctly or not?
So what we're going to do, Mike, is we're going to have a conversation with them on Monday afternoon. And and kind of they're going to share with us what they believe are areas of of growth or areas that that can be refined within schedules. We'll kind of take that feedback. We will be very thoughtful about what we feel is actionable. And we'll also share back with them. You know, and then, you know, the the big question is, you know, are we going to re, are we going to need to reinstate kind of the negotiation teams to change schedules? Because we've already developed reopening plans that include schedules in them. Right? And so, so that's kind of what the the conversation on Monday is really the start of. Right? Is to figure out, you know, are we substantively changing the structure of schedules? Or do we need to reconvene the larger group? Because we're going to need to renegotiate working conditions. And so I think our working theory is that we may not need to do that. But we'll see, you know? You know, I I I do think either way, we need to have these conversations because there are areas within the schedule, our schedules, that that, you know, we need to be able to refine.
Got it, thank you.
Susie?
On that note, when we were in Phase Two prior to, you know, kind of, I think it was like the seventeenth or eighteenth of September, for those eight or so days, there are things in that Phase Two schedule that we've learned, you know, could be improved, right? And oh, just by getting into And just by getting into hybrid and kind of what we might do differently, how the schedule might want, how we might want that schedule to look. But we're not, we haven't made any changes to that schedule because that's kind of, that's a Phase Two agreed to schedule.
Correct.
And, and I think to the point that you were making earlier, I know I have a lot of parents that will say to me, do you think we're going to go back? You know, do you think we're going fully remote? And really what you're describing tonight is, before we go fully remote, we're probably like going back to, it would look different than that, right? It wouldn't be Phase Two. It would be maybe the high school or a particular school or a particular classroom. So there's an in-between of where we are now and Phase Two that could look different based on kind of public health data.
Correct.
So the answer to parents is, it's not, it's not as cut and dry as going from hybrid back to remote only. And in fact, we wouldn't, we probably wouldn't go back to remote only anyway because we'd probably be going back to Phase Two. But the hope would be that Phase Two would look different than we remember it from September 18th or 19th because you've learned a lot about kind of what's necessary in the last seven weeks while we were in hybrid. Is that a fair statement?
I think it's spot on. I think it's a very accurate summary of what we're talking about.
Okay. Yeah, so I think it's just, it's important, and I think this is why you have it on the agenda tonight, for parents to understand that it's just not that black and white and that the goal of the administration is to keep kids in school, you know, for as long as we can while staff and students are safe, can be safe.
Exactly.
And that means closing down one school because the public health data warrants, you know, states that feels like that's what we should do. We're more apt to do that than kind of shut everything down.
Correct.
And if I can just add, I think that opinions around Phase Two might largely be due to, I think we tried to do a lot during Phase Two, which we needed to do. We were starting up a remote schedule, but we were also trying to orient, provide orientation for small groups of students into the building at the same time. So I think people think of Phase Two and they think that was really choppy and it felt like it was kind of all over the place. But it was, it was all intentional to, you know, have some students in a remote schedule, but bring, you know, slowly bring other students back into the buildings. But, you know, if we went back to, it's more about the remote schedules in Phase Two than Phase Two as a whole, I feel like if we were, you know, I think that that needs to be said because I think people have strong feelings about Phase Two because, because of the interruptions with needing to bring small groups in. That's just my, my opinion, just on feedback I've gotten from people, but.
Yeah, I would agree that even if we were to say we're going back to Phase Two, it would not look like those first few days.
Right.
Because that, that just was us trying to get kind of ramped up.
Right.
And so phase, parents shouldn't worry that that's, if we're saying we eventually go back to Phase Two, it's not going to look like it did back in, or mid-September.
Right. If you think about synchronous instruction in Phase Three, you know, it would probably look more like synchronous instruction in Phase Three than it would have looked like when we were just starting in Phase Two. You know, teachers have experience now and I would argue some of them are really, and they're sharing their practice with their colleagues. And I think they're really getting proficient at teaching remotely. And, you know, we're trying to kind of make that public and to kind of spread those good practices when and where we see them. But, yeah.
Any other questions for Doug? Nope. Okay, moving on with the agenda, Subcommittee Reports, Finance and Facilities. We did have our weekly meeting last Thursday. We started discussing the budget, of course, for the next fiscal year. We also discussed the NRT bus company contract that we have. And Bob Shirley also gave us a facilities update. Labor and Personnel?
Thank you. We too continue to meet weekly on Tuesday mornings. At this point, there was not a hefty agenda. We're hearing reports and discussing with Doug and the administration how the rollout of the MOUs are going. And frankly, much of what was discussed tonight was sort of previewed at this morning's Labor Relations meeting. Things are, at this point, are going well and we wish the, you know, the superintendent and his team all the best in carrying them out. Certainly know that the faculty and staff and the union leadership are a big part of the success that we've been able to talk about through most of the meeting tonight. That it's our people, it's our staff, it's our leadership. It's the teachers and the, and all employees that are on the front lines that are making Wakefield successful. And what we've been able to talk about, even when improvements are needed, those two are successes because of the people that we have. So by and large, labor relations is in decent shape. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Student Services, Darcy?
Yes, we had a meeting on Friday evening. And the major outcome of our meeting was the reviewing of surveys that are going to go out to families and to teachers. So those are being finalized and will be sent out tomorrow. And so we're looking forward to getting that data back and using that information to hopefully inform next steps.
Great, thank you. Policy and Communications?
Hi, thanks, Amy. We have not met since our last meeting, but we have our next meeting coming up on November 18th. So we will continue to talk, we'll focus our talk on communications and communicating effectively and what are some, you know, maybe new ways that we can do that. I just also wanted to, we haven't met since we finished Parent University, so I just wanted to kind of give an update on that. And we met last Friday, just to sort of wrap up. And overall, I think it was a great success. We had participation in all of the workshops and the keynote speakers, presentations, they were engaging. There's, you know, there's always sort of a push to make sure that you keep engaging, right? For parents who are, especially in the workshops where we had in-district staff lead those workshops, they're available to. And if parents have continuing concern, they should feel like they could reach out. But they have a great website, Parent University website has all of our speakers. They also have some links to at least one of our keynote speakers. We were able to record. And then for Raul Fernandez, who was our last keynote speaker, there are some links to some documents and guidance that came out of that meeting from one of the attendees that Kara received from her and she was able to upload that to the website as well. So there's a lot of information there for parents or community members that are looking for guidance furthering from the talk of Raul Fernandez in implicit bias training and these discussions. So we are meeting again in January, right Kara?
Yeah, yeah.
We already have a meeting on the schedule. So we're going to kind of gather together and hopefully also put out a communication to the staff. This was put together very quickly, which was wonderful and necessary. But it gives them a little bit more time to be able to communicate maybe what they might be able to share with the community and the parents. So we're looking forward to being able to do that again. And the Parent University group, I just want to, you know, give them a shout out again. They came together very quickly, just like a well-oiled machine. Everything just felt, it was, it was really amazing to see. I had not been involved with the planning of Parent University before and it was really a delight to work with all of them. And I just want to thank them for really pulling it off and getting the word out and making it look so fantastic. So I don't know if you have anything else to add to that, Kara or Doug, but.
No, I think you covered it, Colleen. I agree. The group was great. It was, you know, things for the first time, changing up the format. This was my first experience with the group too. And I know we're looking to expand the group even further and bring in more people who have historically worked on Parent University for the spring event, just to keep expanding it. And I think, I agree, I think that everything went off really well and it was exciting. It was exciting to watch.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you to the group as well. You know, the women on that group, any one of them could run a small country and it's quite impressive. You know, they are, and together as a group and, you know, Kara joining the group, it's, it was, it was really, I think it exceeded expectations this year. You know, this was something that we had never done before. We had never done Parent University in the fall. We had never done it virtually. You know, and our goals were really just to try to bring people together in our community that have been separate for so long to really be able to learn with one another and from one another about topics that we really think are important. So we really can't thank you, Colleen, and that entire group as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Colleen, for that update. I can't agree more. Thank you for that collaboration and it clearly was a huge success. So thank you for that. Future dates and agenda items. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 17th at 7:30. School Committee Comments, Greg?
Hey, Amy. You said November 17th, but isn't it November 24th?
Oh. I'm not sure, is it?
That's on the agenda.
Is it on the agenda? Oh, yes, yep. I got it typo on my end. Thank you, Suzie. Yes, next school committee meeting is Tuesday, November 24th. Thank you, at 7:30. Okay, now Greg.
Thanks, Amy. Yeah, two quick things. First, want to add my thanks to Doug's comments, to the attendees of town meeting for approving the significant investment in the Wakefield Memorial High School project. That's really exciting, really grateful to town meeting for their support. And thanks everyone who voted in the election, how important that is to all the town clerk and all the poll workers and everyone who came together to make our local democracy work last week. That was a pretty powerful experience here in town. And I also wanted to let the members know that I, Amy, you had mentioned Dorothy Presso. She was part of a presentation from the MASC around school committee superintendent relations that I attended virtually over the weekend. And it was a great refresher for me. I learned a lot. The presentation and the slides are going to be available on the MASC website. And if anyone's interested, I'm happy to share those with other members. So that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg.
Yep, I guess just general observations. Obviously, we're all shifting our Subcommittee roles in some way, shape or form, although it seems like I just started anyway. So I think to augment what Darcy had said, also with the SPED programs, we've had some challenges with hiring. That seems to be getting better. Lynn's doing a very good job there, so hopefully that continues in that regard too. The tri-board meeting was very interesting for me personally, just to kind of get so many different perspectives. And I think that's how we get to better solutions when we listen to others who we may not necessarily completely agree with in that regard too. And my thanks to Tom for helping to get me personally, probably Suzie to a much lesser extent, up to speed on the whole labor relation side as well. So it's, it keeps getting more interesting, in quotation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
So at the risk of jinxing us, and I am going to knock on wood here. I was one of those people who was saying, we're just, we just got to get through to Thanksgiving. We just got to get through to Thanksgiving. And here we are, two weeks away, entering Week Seven, numbers looking good. Like, I'm starting to feel like our kids could be in school through Christmas and maybe into January. And what an amazing feeling because we know our kids are better off if they're in school. I've heard parent after parent after parent say to me, my kid is so much happier the night before they're heading into school. Or I, my kid is so much happier on the days when they come home from school. It is just so important and I'm just so thankful for everybody who is playing a role in making this happen, whether it be the teachers who are in there, the leaders, you know, teacher leaders, the administrators, the nurses, the parents. You know, like, we need everybody to kind of cooperate and do their part. And here we are, doing our part and have had our kids in school for seven weeks where there's communities literally next door where their kids have been going fully remote. And I just, from the very beginning, have felt like we needed to get our kids into school to build relationships with teachers. And that is happening and they're happy and they're better for it. And so I'm just, I just want to say a heartfelt thank you for everybody who's kind of doing their part because you really do need every piece of the puzzle in place for this to work. And I feel like Wakefield's really doing a great job at that. So thank you.
Thank you, Suzie.
Thank you. I guess, I guess probably the first, I want to echo everything that Suzie just said. I just couldn't, I couldn't agree more that there are, as I mentioned moments ago, on delayed relations because of the terrific work and planning that has gone on with administration and staff and teachers and teacher leaders, as well as the spirit, the spirit that students and parents bring to this, it's what's making it successful. Even in our, even in our most difficult of days, it is done in a sense of cooperation with the students, student focus first, keeping students in school. So I just wanted to echo everything that Suzie said and thank you for saying it so well. Also, just very quickly, thank everyone from town meeting for a very important vote, very important step forward for the high school. That's a very big deal for the town of Wakefield and for the future Wakefield High School students. So that's a big deal. So certainly, everyone, please stay tuned because the snowball has yet to be rolled down the hill. The rest of it is coming. And just congratulations to everyone involved in Parent University, just in everything that was already said earlier. So I won't, I'll repeat most of that, but congratulations to everyone that made that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Amy. I also wanted to just jump on and add to what Suzie said too. And so my, my, three of my boys play hockey and I know our superintendent is also a hockey player, so he'll appreciate this. But we were on a hockey pause for, you know, various reasons that, you know, with maybe levels of cooperation, unsafe, you know, practices and whatnot. And so jumping on what Suzie said, what I was thinking before she said that was it really is a total collaboration. We've been able to come back to having our kids play games again this past weekend and rings are opening, but with very strict guidelines. And it just, to me, it transfers to every situation you're in, in this particular larger situation, right? I mean, we just want our students to be in school as much as they can. We want them to be active in the activities that they choose to do. But that takes sort of swallowing some of your other ideas, you know, not so much your pride, but, you know, we can't really watch our kids play hockey right now. A lot of the rings don't allow spectators. And that takes a little bit of swallowing, right? So in school and in district, I think that when you keep the focus on the staff and the students and their safety and the mission to keep them in school in person and also high-quality remote learning, I think that the collaboration, you know, that you see in every facet of the situation is similar. And, you know, you have to kind of step back from it and see the bigger picture of it and let a lot go as well, right? You know, you have to really like zone in on those important pieces. And I know it's really hard, like I've heard from a lot of parents and had conversations that, you know, it's hard to accept sort of what it looks like. But when you zone in on the parts that really matter right now, I think that you're like, okay, that's what it is. You know, like, these are the most important things and this is what we have to move forward with. And in district, I think that's always been the focus. And in district, I think that's always been the focus, leading to where we are now. You know, and, you know, with your conversation tonight, Doug and Kara and your presentation, it's, it's such a thoughtful approach to say, "Hey, we're not ready to say, okay, we're moving out of phase three, but we're going to take each step as it comes," right? And not make rash decisions because we know, you know, what the goal is. And, and the goal is to have our kids in school as much as possible. And obviously their utmost importance is their safety. So I was just making that correlation in my head and I wanted to share it because I know a, a lot of parents have, outside of school, they have activities that their kids are involved in that become challenging as well. And, you know, if you can look at it as a complete collaboration with everyone, teachers, staff, coaches, students, parents, um, you know, we're all working for the same goal. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Colleen. Darcy?
Uh, yes, I, I'd like to second or third what everyone has said about the efforts in, in the school. And, um, it is, um, a, a, a big accomplishment that we're seven, right, weeks in and, and the students are still there. And so, and I really am confident that, um, that the district is taking a, a, a data-based approach, collecting data from multiple sources and going to use that information to just continue to, um, improve what, what's happening and at the same time, keeping students safe. And then, of course, the steps towards a hu, a new high school is certainly steps in the right direction. So I'm pretty excited about that as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, um, I, I also will echo what everyone else already said. And, um, I would also, um, like to thank the community for coming out on Saturday for, uh, town meeting and the approval of, uh, the next steps with the high school. And, uh, you know, I definitely want to give a shout out to Steve Mayo for his continued hard work and support and collaboration with us and ensuring that, uh, you know, we move on with the next step, um, in this phase. So thank you so much for that. Did you want to have, do you have any remarks?
No, I think, I think we've covered it all.
Okay, great. Um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of November 10th, 2020.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Bayer?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
And Mr. Leacros?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all. That concludes our meeting for this evening. Thank you all for tuning in. Good night.